Pastor Young and Lem come up and give us the salvation army.
Let's pray. Our Father, we are so eternally grateful that you give us the opportunity to come into your presence this morning. Lord, we know we're not worthy to stand in your presence, and yet you love us so much, Father, that you've made that possible through the gift of your Son. Father, I pray that you would be with those who are making decisions this morning, who impact lives of your children in these communities. And I pray, Lord, that you would be glorified and honored at all of the things that take place in this room this morning. Lord, I pray for our leaders, and I ask that you would bless them, Father, and give them the wisdom and the courage that they need to do what's right for these communities and the people who live in these communities. We thank you, Father, as we celebrated the Fourth of July yesterday, Lord, the independence of our country. We thank you for our country and the freedoms that we so often take for granted. And yet, Lord, we realize that people gave of their lives so that we have those freedoms and could sit in rooms like this and make decisions and discuss business that affect lives. Bless us, Father. Keep us and direct us. In your name we pray. Amen.
Thank you, Supervisor Martin. Lead it in favor.
I plead the allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, first up on the thing that we have ordered approval near request of a term of attack on Jim Hollingworth, President of the Gulf Coast Brother Parade, to use a parking lot and garage at the Harris County Gold House in Gulfport by the Junior J.R. OTC and the youth marching groups. Motion?
Motion.
Second. Discussions? All in favor of the motion? Say aye.
Aye.
Out opposed? Motion carries. I intubably recognize Mr. Matt McDonald, Executive Director of Mississippi Gulf Coliseum, to present an effective audit firm auditing services for the fiscal years 2001 through 2023.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Today, we're here to ask y'all to approve what the Commission ratified at our last meeting in matters to hire Columber and Harvey and Associates to conduct our audit for the next three years. We sent it out for RFP. Only two companies, two firms bid or sent in proposals. Alexander Van Loon and Columber Harvey and Associates. Columber, Harvey, and Associates were slightly cheaper for the annual audit, plus we have a single audit because of the grants that we're still executing. And they also have a long history of auditing us from 1983 to 2013. Excuse me, 1984 to 2013. So they understand how we operate. Our operations haven't changed. Our software that we use, the platforms we use have definitely changed. But how we conduct business, how we sell shows, how we account for box office funds, parking, and all that is still the same. So that is why I'm here. But while I'm also here, I do enjoy getting to come and visit with y'all and tell y'all our successes. The month of June was as strong or stronger than the month of April, and those two months alone have now got us in a position to where we have reached our revenue projections that we presented to y'all last year as part of budget. We've reached those in nine months. So the following three months, we're putting money in the bank. And that's exactly what we intended to do when we submitted that budget. We just didn't know it would be quite this good. Let me put it in perspective to you. In the 44 years before this year, we've had four shows that have grossed a million dollars. Only four. The Eagles, Luciano Pavarotti, Cher, and Elton John. In the last 12 months, we have had six more shows gross over a million dollars in ticket sales in the last 12 months. So business is great. My team is buying in every day. With me today is Shelby Ferguson, our CFO, and she will hand out, do you have anything to hand out for?
I just saw.
The copies of what the auditors presented in terms of their request for, our request for proposal. But everybody's doing good. We're getting started on developing the land that we now own outright, the old Holiday Inn property. Cotton Forest Company was a little bitter on that, and they're out there every day. I don't think he knows what a day off means. He's out there working. So we're going to be ready for Cruisin' the Coast. That was our objective. And the timeline we had was now till then, and I think we'll be ready with that part line. We're going to need it. But other than that, that's all I have today. And thank you all again for the trust and the support you put into what our operations do every day. And thank you for the board members that you appointed. They've all been great.
Thank you.
Matt, are you asking us to give approval for you to continue with Columber Harvey?
Well, we're going to be starting with him, and it's a three-year deal. And per our legislation, anything over 180 days, I have to come see y'all.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Is there any further discussion?
One thing. You do a great job. Thank you so much for everything.
My team does a great job.
I mean, the events, I heard Alan Jackson was knocked out of the park.
It was good.
Thank you.
Okay, without any further discussion, all in favor of that motion? Say aye.
Aye.
Out opposed?
Thank you.
Item B, order adjudicating the Board President's signature on and approving the memorandum of understanding by and between the Memorial Hospital of Gulfport and Harrison County Mississippi Memorial Hospital providing emergency protective and specialty care measures and services to the citizens of Harrison County in response to COVID-19.
Finishing?
Second.
Discussion?
Only discussion. I hadn't heard if they'd been successful or not. Probably too early. What this is, get rid of work and FEMA. Just wondering if we heard anything. Probably too early.
Help me out from the hospital. Right back in the back.
I haven't heard anything yet, but I can find it.
Just curious. I thought it might be a little early.
Okay, is there any further discussion? Okay, all in favor of that motion? Say aye.
Aye.
Out opposed? Motion carries. Item C, discuss coast tourism. Commission, Mississippi Gulf Coast Region Convention Bureau, and appointments as well as, should I say, nominees. Okay, first thing we got is a couple of things. We discussed this at one of our meetings in Biloxi. It kind of got out of hand. So as the President, I want to make sure it don't happen again this time around. I've done some research on both sides of this spectrum, and a couple of things that I've drawn a conclusion on. One is Supervisor Connie Rockwell is not a liar. And I depend her on it. She never lied to me, and she never has lied to anyone else I'm aware of. The second thing is Ms. Brooke definitely wants to continue going forward. I've spoken with her, spoken with others. So the President said, we're going to bring up Ms. Brooke, and she can speak her, how she feels about the situation going forward. Give three to five minutes.
I've written a short statement. I've got a copy here for all of y'all, so I will just read this. And so I would like to start by thanking each of you for giving me the opportunity to serve on the Coastal Mississippi Board of Commissioners for the last two years and three months. I have tried during this time to serve the Boards of Supervisors, the Coastal Mississippi Board of Commissioners, and staff and all tourism stakeholders and taxpayers with integrity, transparency, and in a way to promote regionalism on the coast and within the state. It is my desire to be reappointed and continue to serve the Commission as Board President for another term, which began on July 1st, 2022. I have attached minutes from our May 26 meeting. Item number 16 unanimously appointed me to the slate of officers as President with only two members absent. Everybody else present, that would be 13 Commissioners voted for my reappointment. I've also attached some emails from Commissioner St. Pay, which show Commission support for the needed reforms that have been made this year. And in addition, I believe you have received letters of support from both the Gulf Coast Business Council and Mississippi Gaming Executives. Although we have made many improvements to the overall governance of Coastal Mississippi, many more reforms are needed for future success. I really want to see these initiatives through and continue to be a part of the success story that is Coastal Mississippi.
Thank you.
Do y'all want copies?
Yes, please.
Oh, you don't want copies?
I want to give one more.
Yeah. Give one of them.
Okay.
So I want to get, first, I want to get an opportunity, and the board members that want to say anything along the lines of basically what you just heard.
I did have one thing. Some of these are corrections for the press, too. Ms. Brooke Schultz was not ousted. Her term was up July 1. The date that, and she was well aware, were you aware, basically, of that date being July 1?
Yes, I was.
You don't have to get that out of you. Ms. Schultz referred to it over and over. She told people from Hancock County to Jackson County with words like, "I'm getting off the board. I'm tired. I've had enough." Ms. Schultz had from May, also had from May 26 to June 13 to make four to five phone calls, one to each Board Member, and respectfully asked to be reappointed. She did not. Ms. Schultz never contacted the Board to dispel any of the comments that she had made previously. In the beginning of June 13 meeting, Supervisor Powers nominated, I believe, Mr. Scrimetta to take the place of Ms. Ann Stewart. Later, we found out that Ms. Ann Stewart had not resigned, and we didn't have any letter. As Supervisor Ladner asked for a letter of resignation, we had no letter of recognition. I'm sorry, recommendation, resignation. I'll get it straight in a minute. We also, she has another year and a half, right?
Yes.
The Tourism Board, she's not termed out as Ms. Schultz was. So meanwhile, in that meeting, too, I knew that the Board of Supervisors would not have another meeting until July 5, four days after Ms. Schultz's term had expired. I nominated a gentleman who is in the hospitality industry for over 30 years. The majority of the Board voted for him, and he is in my district. He is positive and excited to serve. We should be celebrating tourism, tourism like Matt McDonald's success with his events and concerts, Alan Jackson, Woody Bailey, Cruisin' the Coast, Graping the Coast, Rusty David, and the Bill fishing tournaments. Those are things we should be celebrating, but we're not. We're here today. Should we throw out the rulebook, and the laws are perceived? Thank you for your time.
Could I respond to a couple of things that were just said? There was a time from probably November through March that being the President of the Board of Commissioners for Coastal Mississippi was a very tough job. It is an unpaid position, as y'all are all aware. And there were weeks that I was spending more time on Coastal Mississippi business than I was on my own career. And that's hard when you're self-employed. At the same time, my mother has a terminal illness. I was making tricks to Andy Anderson. It was a bad time, and yes, I told a lot of people that I wouldn't quit, but on June 30th, I would be done. And then we hired Judy Young, who has been an exceptional Executive Director for Coastal Mississippi, and things changed, and it became a nice place to be. We were making some true reforms and really going in the right direction, getting the Board to be more of an oversight Board instead of a day-to-day management Board. I did contact a Supervisor prior to May 26. I told Rebecca Powers, who is the reason I was appointed to the Board, that I would like to be reappointed, and I was told I would be. I was not aware that I had to contact all five Board Members. As you said in the meeting, you didn't even know me when I was appointed to the Board, and that is true. So I contacted the person that didn't know me, and I didn't know until the June 13 Board meeting that it was actually Beverly who appointed me. I thought it was Rebecca. So I contacted the one Supervisor that I thought had appointed me. So I'm sorry if I did that wrong. I would have contacted all of you had I known. I didn't know that.
No, that's fine, and I'll clarify and apologize to you. You did call me and say that. But considering you saved regionalism, considering you unanimously reappointed, voted by your Commission to continuous President, even though it's Jackson County's term, which is really remarkable considering such turmoil that we had a year ago. Brooke, as a tax attorney, saved regionalism, brought all three counties together, and you did a tremendous job. So we should all thank you. On June 13, I never dreamed that I would be so blindsided because we've always spoken openly, the five of us always, to throw a name in the hat when it comes to at-large. We each have our own personal appointment to be there in our stead because we cannot be at all 13 Commission meetings at all times. I never dreamed that on June 13, what happened, what you all saw unfold. You have done a tremendous job, and I apologize to you that this has happened. Unanimously voted to be the President again for 2023, even though it's Jackson County's turn. Giving that to Harrison County, what does that say? As far as Ms. Stewart, my dear friend, you helped me become an anchor many years ago, and I appreciate all you have done for your entire life for Harrison County. But when you quit returning my calls many months ago, I had no choice. I knew nothing of what was going on. Text can show, my phone can show, many months ago, you quit returning my calls. I apologize to you, Brooke, that I did not tell them. I didn't think I needed to call and bother them with that information because we all knew you were going to serve again because you unanimously reappointed as the President. But on June 13, we saw what happened. And again, if you say, Connie, to follow the law, I have here where every appointment since this began nine years ago has never, very rarely, 80% of the time has always been whoever. You don't have to live in that person's district. And if we need to get an AG's opinion to back that up, we certainly can. I would like to do that, Tim.
If we have one draft, it is not sufficient because of only the information of the Board to do so.
The law does state, however, I'm sorry, may I ask?
Ma'am?
Yes, you done?
Yeah, I'm just answering to that. You can sit down. Circle back to the fact that her term was up July 1. She had not notified any Board Member except one, and it takes three to be reappointed. I understand the, her family issues and work as most of us do. However, the law states that the Commissioner will be, or that a Supervisor or Commissioner will be appointed from the district in which they are appointed. And anybody can do that. Any one of us could have nominated someone else besides. It was not blindsided. You saw the times and the dates. There was no blindsiding to it. From July, or from May 26 to July, no contact with you whatsoever to say, "I respectfully would like to be reappointed." One person. Anyway, I apologize. Go ahead.
I would just like to echo Ms. Powers. I think we probably should reach out and get an AG's opinion, not to change what's already been done because as far as I'm concerned, it's over. But to instead find out if indeed whoever nominates someone, it has to be someone that resides in their district. I understand that's what the law says, and that's the way I took it. But I think for the record, we should probably get an AG's opinion.
Thank you.
Just, if I may, Mr. President, just for clarification, talking about nomination from the district. The law provides that each Supervisor district or each Supervisor has an appointment. And that appointment that each Supervisor has has to be from the district in which that Supervisor makes that appointment. There are five appointments on the Tourism Board that each one of us make. And that appointment by the Supervisor has, that person has to live within the Supervisor's district. Then there's four at-large. Now, by definition, at-large means the whole county. And anyone, any Supervisor can recommend any at-large appointment in different to where that person lives. For example, if I wanted to make a recommendation of an at-large appointment, and that person lives in Biloxi, I can do that. And I don't see where the law has any, where there's any interpretation that would be otherwise. That's what we're getting an Attorney General's opinion on. There are five appointments, and those five appointments have to come from the district in which the Supervisor is making that appointment. And then there are four at-large, and at-large means at-large, it means anywhere in the county. And any Supervisor can make that recommendation. So I just wanted to make that clear.
But according to the law that Mr. Holloman read of us, it was not clear.
It's got some problems, and let me read it so the Board understands.
It doesn't even say reside. It says from.
The Board of Supervisors of Harrison County shall appoint nine Members of the Bureau with at least, at least one Member from each District of Supervisor upon recommendation of such Supervisor. So nine Members, five of which each Supervisor has a right to nominate somebody from their district. I recommend one from their district. And this is the problem. This is a standalone sentence that says, "No Supervisor may nominate any person from another Supervisor's district to be a Member of the Bureau." Mr. Ladner is correct. He said this last time. He believes that the ten of this, where it was to refer back to the five appointments. But it's not clear. It has a standalone sentence. It doesn't say recommendation. This sentence says nominate, which is another mistake. But no Supervisor may nominate. I can't, I, in my opinion, I agree with Mr. Ladner that it's referring back to the five. But that's just my opinion. That's not what this statute says. It literally has one sentence that needs an interpretation. And I can give you my opinion, but the AG's office will protect you if they give an opinion, and you follow that opinion.
Do we need a motion to have that, or can we just ask you?
You can make a motion if you want. Mr. President asked me to draft it. We drafted it, and then we got concerned that we didn't have all the Supervisors put into it. So we waited till this meeting so we could get that.
Yeah, we can get that motion.
Second, the motion.
All in favor of the motions? Say aye.
Aye.
Out opposed? Motion carries.
I do since this was brought up. We have an issue here with Ms. Ann Stewart's appointment. She's been appointed. Now, appointing somebody else to take her position, but her position is not vacant. But you can't appoint somebody unless its offices vacant or to an open position, I guess is a better way to put it. So either the Board's choices to remove Ms. Stewart or, because that appointment is an issue at this point because you can't replace her without removing her.
Well, because it's my personal appointment in my district, I would ask and make the motion to do so to confirm Mr. Robert Scrimetta. I asked for months for resignation, never got a return. What was I to do?
I understand your reasoning.
So there's my motion.
Motion to remove Ms. Stewart and to appoint Mr. Scrimetta.
Yes.
In her place.
I'll second that motion.
Ms. Stewart, would you like to have two words? You said your name and the address for the reporter, please.
Not really, but since I put it here, I'm glad to tell you what's happening. I got appointed last year at this time, and I didn't want the position. But I was asked to do it, and I thought I would. But now, at the time, I didn't know how long it was. I did not know that till we got a letter from the Supervisors with 2024. Now, I have not resigned. I'd like to stay until my term's up, if that's okay. I think we're doing a good job. And when it comes to not recall, her calling me, I'm sorry, Rebecca, but I'm not going to get into this. I don't think it's time. I think we're too professional to do this. If y'all want me to stay, fine. If not, I can go. But I do want to clear one thing. Brooke's done a wonderful job, but we've got some other ones in here that work just as hard. So I'm kind of tired of just one person. I'm sorry, Brooke. I know you did a great job, but we've got other ones that did. And I think they need to stay. Stand up. Come on, Kim. Stand up. Stay standing up. Come on. And they've done a wonderful job, so they all should have a handful. Thank you so much. If you need me, they all talk.
Is anyone else having any discussion? Are you all in favor of the motion to remove Ms. Stewart? Say aye.
Aye.
Out opposed?
No.
Okay, so there you have it. So we'll get an AG's opinion. I mean, there's so much more I can say, but out of respect to Ms. Fritz, you know, I, this, you know, the precedent has been set the way we have always appointed at-large. But for some reason, just now, that one line is what we are now using to say that that is the right way?
The law is being revised.
Brooke can be reappointed. I'm sorry. I apologize. Brooke can be reappointed to a previous seat. It no longer needs to be a reconsideration. But if you want to wait for the AG's opinion, we can do that. Again, Brooke was President and went through hell and high water for us. I like Mr. Jonathan Jones, if you don't mind. We got a letter. It's been in the Sun Herald, if you all know. We got a letter from all of our leaders, our biggest business leaders and job creators. John Dane is here. So many are here in support of this. Please, and Jerry St. Pay also signed the letter that you're about to tell us about.
Yeah, good morning. I'm Jonathan Jones. I'm the General Manager at Harris Gulf Coast in Biloxi. Represent the gaming industry.
Who is the address for the record?
280 Beach Boulevard, Biloxi. So represent the gaming industry, you know, the primary reason why folks from out of town come to visit us, and we're privileged to be able to serve folks from out of town, tourists that come. As an industry, we unanimously support regional tourism and promoting the Gulf Coast as a destination. And we unanimously support the work that Brooke has done to really frankly bring us from the brink of collapse to a much more stable place, and we support that. I'm also a member of the Executive Committee of the Gulf Coast Business Council. So this is a broader group of businesses from banking to construction, healthcare, shipbuilding, utilities. Supervisor Powers mentioned a letter that you've all received. It's been signed by leaders of all the industries from across the coast who also support regional tourism, stability within that organization, the steps that are being made towards progress, and recognize Brooke particularly for her work towards bringing us back to a place where things are moving in the right direction. So we're all here to support her reinstatement as President through whatever process that needs to take shape, but we all support her. And happy to answer any questions you guys have.
Yes, just for the record, I never got the letter.
Okay.
Nor did I.
We'll make copies. I have copies here, but we can make some more. I can read it if you guys want.
Please. No.
I just wanted to know.
I'll make sure you guys get copies.
Thanks.
Can you give it to Brittany, please, to spread it out? So I'll make a motion to spread that letter on the minutes, please.
All in favor of that motion? Say aye.
Aye.
Out opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Once again, I'd like to reiterate, she was not ousted. Her term was up July 1. She had said that she did not want to be reappointed. She never contacted four Members of the Board, but she contacted the entire Gulf Coast Council about it. But she never contacted the people that appoint her to the Board. And I just want you to know, the law was followed. The majority of the Board has spoken. We have a new appointment that is an absolute wonderful person and would do a great job. He is from the hospitality, he's been in hospitality for 30 years, and I'm sure he'll be great. Thank you.
I'd like to answer to that.
May I go back?
I'd like to say one more thing.
Here, may I go back? Mr. Holloman, can you get that AG's opinion sooner rather than later? But I also need to ask, with Ann Stewart, with respect to Mr. Scrimetta. So what's the deal with that?
It's not valid because it filled, he had a position, somebody had not resigned or was still filled. The Board didn't remove Ms. Stewart, and he can't take that place, so.
We'll worry about that later. It's a big deal.
He may take another place if it opens up.
So I would just like to, I'd like to say.
There's one more thing, just so y'all know that we noticed while we were there. There's a 10-year limit on how long you can serve. The list that was provided by the Board Secretaries showed that Mr. Holmes, of his presence, says he served in 2025. He actually is going to go through 2023, there's a 10-year limit. They had five years.
We need to correct that.
Can you correct that?
So he needs, so he's aware of that. It won't be controversial when it comes up. It'll be natural that he moved it to your perspective.
So back to what So back to what Supervisor Rocco said about she was not ousted. The reason that Brooke reached out to me is because she thought I was her appointee, because I was the one who originally said, "May I nominate you to be at large?" The fact that she was reappointed unanimously, right, Richard, you were there, unanimously to be president on May 26 for the next year proves, Ms. Rocco, that it was not her intention to step away. So she was indeed ousted.
I was not.
Mr. Sherman.
Not bad, Mrs..
I know, but I was going to do it May 13.
I wasn't at the meeting.
I mean, June, no.
It was a tourism meeting, and I don't think any board members were.
I think, I think.
I was going to do it June 13.
I think we've kind of set the precedence in terms of whether she wants to go forward or not. I think everything else is just a race. So we don't need to entertain that. But we do need to make a decision as far as Ms. Brooke goes going forward. We need to make that decision today.
Well, I'll make a motion so we can go ahead and vote on it to reappoint her. Reappoint to the previous seat. Does not need to be a reconsideration. Thomas Sherman is technically commissioner as of four days ago. He's not attended any meetings since they've not had any. Brooke, however, has. She is the commission's president for next year as well, so it only makes sense that I make a nomination to, a motion to reappoint her in her previous seat.
Point of order. I don't know how we can go forward with that motion when we've already appointed somebody.
It would be a motion to rescind, but a motion to reappoint her, because obviously we all know.
That's not what your motion was.
A motion to rescind Thomas Sherman's appointment and reappoint Brooke Schultz to her previous seat.
Can I still call point of order?
Yes, me, I don't think, I think you have to remove Mr. Sherman. He's been appointed. It doesn't say anything about being sworn in. It says appointment. So you can remove him. The board has, the majority of the board has authority to remove him and appoint somebody. That's the only statute. One of the reasons I say this, it used to be a law until this statute, that once you appointed somebody to any of these commissions, they served their term. The board had no authority to remove them at all. So you can't rescind an appointment and get rid of them. You have to follow the statute. In this case, the statute has a specific provision that you can remove a commissioner, so the board can move to remove somebody and then appoint somebody new. But I don't think you can rescind the appointment that's already taken.
Well, House Bill number 1716-213, Section 34, actually states allows removal with a majority vote, no reason required.
That's correct.
But here goes back to the AG's opinion. Can Supervisor Powers nominate somebody who lives in a different district?
That's.
That's the question.
But it's never been a problem before.
But I didn't know that before, but now we do.
Nor did I, and the law has been.
So you figured that out on June 13?
No, I did not.
The House Bill's just poorly written. As you read it, it's just poorly written. It's got a standalone sentence that says what it says. Usually when you interpret statutes, if it says what it says, that's the way you're supposed to follow it. In reading this, I actually agree with Mr. Lattner that was not intended. It was intended to refer back to the recommendations of the five supervisors, but that's not what it says, unfortunately. And so it's one of those questions, my opinion is one thing, and the AG's office may follow my opinion, but I don't know, because it could go either way. I mean, you literally could interpret this, that that second sentence is referring back to the nomination by eight supervisors, or you can say it's standalone, no supervisor can appoint somebody from another supervisor's district.
We need that answered.
That interpretation does not make sense to me, as I read the whole statute. But again, I can't tell you for certain that that's a correct interpretation.
Pause some time for anyone to get into.
We will ask the AG's office to expiate. I'll get it out today, and I'll call them and so we can answer this by the next meeting, if we can get it, even if it's just verbal.
I'll say for the record that that is so unfair to Mr. Sherman because of this situation. The majority voted for Mr. Sherman, and you are going to do away with that before he ever even has a chance to serve. That is just totally.
Disrespectful. Well, we did it with misinformation. We did a vote given misinformation. Mr. Sherman, with all due respect, you say he's a 30-year tourism leader. I know he's a wine distributor. And with all due respect, Kim, I know he's your husband's best friend. This is about stacking the vote, and that's all it is. And I'm sorry, I have to speak the truth, but you deserve to know the truth. This is ludicrous. Jerry St. Pay on down to every executive of every leading industry will tell you what this woman did. Put her private law firm on hold and work for us full time. I made the motion. If you want to vote, I know what the outcome will be, but I just want it on the record.
Is there any further discussion?
I'm calling point of order.
Point of order. So not going to vote on the rule?
Well, I don't think it's a, what your motion.
It's not a valid motion?
I don't think.
Tim, you don't think that's a valid motion?
Motion was to remove Mr. Sherman and to replace.
Reappoint.
Reappoint. I'm not sure why that would not be.
Because you're going back to the nominating, somebody lives in a different district.
Well, that's.
But you did last time.
I know, but I didn't know that was the law.
If the motion's successful, that can be an issue, but if it's not successful, then I'm not sure that's an issue yet. We'll get an answer to that. We won't wait until the next meeting.
Okay, well, who will serve as president in the next two weeks until we figure the AG's?
Their vice president, what does their bylaw say? It's usually going to be.
It would be Greg Cronin, but he wasn't prepared to be president. That's why Jackson County gave it to you, right?
Their bylaws say that in the absence of the president, the vice president serve. We went through that before with them, so that would be an absence. But they would actually have to nominate a new president.
Correct.
They chose to elect the vice president serve.
She's not president because she's not an elected appointed person. Her term was expired July 1.
But at last Friday's meeting, they reconfirmed that slate and reappointed her again. How many times does the commission have to speak?
Again, she is not on the board as of July 1.
Yeah, it's very clear.
You can throw out the real book if you wish, but that is the rules and the regulations, and it seems to not matter, because if someone doesn't get their way this way, we're just going to change the law, change everything. Amazing.
Changing the narrative to fit what you personally desire against this person is never okay. I'm sorry. If I'm not reelected for this, don't care. But I'm not going to not speak the truth. It's not okay. I'm done.
So, Mr. Lattner, you have something? Anyone else?
The only thing I would say, that we took the board, the board took action based on in fact hearsay that she did not want to be reappointed. The board speaks through its minutes. If somebody doesn't want to be reappointed, they need to tell the board through a letter of resignation or that they don't want to be reappointed if their term is ending. The problem that I had is that we had hearsay, and that's why at the beginning of the, at the meeting, when we were discussing this, I suggested that we hear from her, from Ms. Brooke, whether she wanted to be reappointed or not. There was an indication that she didn't want to be reappointed, but we didn't have any official notice from her.
We didn't have it from Anne Stewart?
That is a different type of appointment.
She's my person.
You've got to keep in mind, there are different types of, at large is different than an appointment by supervisor.
But it expired terms one thing. Her term wasn't expired.
Her term was not expired, and she should have had a.
It doesn't matter whether their terms, it depends on what type of appointment that you're making. If you're making an at-large appointment, the board needs to be informed by the person who's serving, whether they want to continue or not, whether, and you can remove an at-large appointment by majority of the board. I'm not saying that. I'm just simply saying that we were hearsaying that she wasn't, didn't want to be reappointed.
But she did admit that, correct?
We didn't hear from her, and that's why I asked, let's hear from her.
Keep in mind, there are two different types of appointment. As Tim has said, each one
of us have an appointment. Then there's at-large appointments. We can remove any of them at any time that we so desire.
All right, we, so I guess we have to, we're going to get, try to get a verbal.
I'll send them the letter we drafted, and then I'm going to call them and talk to them at the meeting as quick as possible. It shouldn't take that long. The statute is what it is. They're going to have to make it. They will do them if you call.
Can't you ask?
I have. Still didn't work.
Yeah. Okay, and also, just one other thing before we move on any further. I have my appointee, Mr. Richard Marsh. I'm a bit disappointed in something that happened with the board. He was secretary, and it's been a courtesy over the years that if you're a secretary and you go up to treasurer, and it's a courtesy over the board over the last several years that from a treasurer you go up to the vice president, and it's a courtesy over the years as vice president, you go up to president. Well, my appointee, Richard Marsh, was the secretary, but never moved up. So I have a lot of questions as to why his courtesy wasn't given to him as others, and that's disappointing to me. He should be the vice president or the treasurer, vice president, the president. I don't understand why that didn't happen. And it's disappointing to me. Do we have anything here further? Okay. So next up, we're going to the consensus.
You have a second down here. Motion on second.
Well, I'll offer a substantive motion to table that until we can.
Second. Well, you have to vote on it.
Not substantive?
Well, no, I'm saying that that had been voted on, and this happened, so I'm just, hey, as clerk of the board, I'm only telling the president what is on the table.
You got a substantive motion?
Yes, you got a substantive. Okay. Have a substantive motion on the table, then the motion second, and further discussion. I'll in favor of the motion, say aye. Out opposed?
No.
Consensus, gentlemen. Item number 5 through 11 has been placed on the consensus in the same appearing to be routine, non-contrary, compatible with our supervisor's license to agree. Second.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor of the motion, say aye. Out opposed? Motion carries. Order acknowledging receipt of the 2022 real and personal property assessment rolls for the person and second judicial district of Harrison County, Mississippi, as presented by the tax exception, per section 273581. Motion, second.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor of the motion, say aye. Out opposed? Motion carries. Order approving any kind of travel reimbursement for tax exceptions office as listed. Second.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor of the motion, say aye. Out opposed? Motion carries.
Sure. All right, number 14, tax collector. Order spreading upon the minutes personnel changes for the tax collector's office as listed and on file with payroll administrator and human resources department. Motion?
Motion.
All those in favor? I'm sorry, discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Number 15, fire services. Order approving the sole source purchased from Communications International Inc. in the amount of $38,623. Payable from 10625091849 Harris CL95P25 portable radios. Programming charges and accessories for fire services as recommended by the purchase clerk. Motion?
Second. Only discussion, Pat. All these radios, we're done, and maybe the sheriff can address this as well. Aren't we in a study to determine or changing the system, the radio system?
We're not. Yes.
Is it, what's the group, the man that's still, the people still in the study?
Um.
For the radio system? Anyway, it doesn't matter. It doesn't matter. Aren't we doing that? And the reason that I'm asking this question, we're spending $38,000 for radios. Will that, will that fit within a new system that we're?
No, the biggest thing on there is their P25 capable. So as long as they're P25 capable, that's what we're going to.
Oh, okay. That's, that's just what I want to clarify. Yeah, so that they will be capable.
Yes.
That's the problem.
Yeah.
Good.
Speak to you.
Thanks.
All those in favor? Motion carries. Number 16, Sand Beach. Order authorizing the board president to execute contract with Floor Industrial Contractors, Inc. for the year 2020, I'm sorry, FY 2022, FY 22P62623, Long Beach Pavilion Harbor and Volleyball Area Tyglens Grant Project Construction as recommended by Chuck Loftus, Sand Beach Director, and bid was accepted June 13, 2022. Motion?
Motion.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Seventeen, Senior Resources Agency. Order adjudicating the submission of application for funds requested by Senior Resources Agency in the amount of $714,600 for FY 2022-23 with Southern Miss Planning Development District area on aging, SMPDD, AAAA, to provide adult daycare, NSIP, for congregate meals, senior centers and transportation services in Harrison County from October 1 of '22 through September 30 of '23, and authorize the board president to execute the same. Motion?
Motion.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Number 18, order accepting the quote of Master Medical Supplies as the best value for the Harrison County Senior Resource Agency Department as per attached justification letter for the purchase of automated external defibrillators, AEDs, at a cost of $10,240, payable from 001452922. Motion?
Motion.
Second. Discussion. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Number 19, zoning administrator. Order, I'm sorry.
If I can do them all together.
Sure.
Item 19 through 22 are standard cases for the planning commission, no appeal. We'd ask you to concur with the recommendations of the planning commission.
Thank you, Pat.
Motion to concur.
Second.
Okay.
Item, motion to concur.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Twenty-three, personnel. Order approving payment of claims listed to be paid from the toward account.
Motion.
Discussion. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Twenty-four, order concurring with the road manager on employment as listed and as on file with the payroll clerk and personnel human resources department.
Motion.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Twenty-five, order spreading upon the minutes the personnel changes of the sheriff's office as listed and on file with the payroll clerk and personnel human resources department. Motion?
Motion.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
I'm sorry.
It's okay.
Did Amanda leave, or did she just go to another department? Amanda Brand?
I don't really know. I think she resigned and went to Long Beach.
Okay. All those in favor, say aye? Motion carries. Twenty-six, oh, you want to take over? Number twenty-six.
Twenty-six.
Sure.
Item 26, order concurring with the county administrator on employment as listed and as on file with the payroll clerk.
Motion.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor of the motion, say aye. Out opposed? Motion carries. Twenty-seven, order acknowledging that no specification were received on June 9, 2022, to proceed with a reverse auction on the facilities and maintenance department equipment pre-owned used bucket truck, and request approved to readvertise as requested by the facilities and the maintenance director and the purchase clerk.
Motion.
Second. Discussion, why no specifications? Who was responsible for having specifications? Why were there no specifications? That's the first time that I remember anything like that.
Well, the only reason was because it was a used vehicle, and no one had anything that they could present to us, so they couldn't put out the specifications.
Right. So we're going to try it again.
Reports were received, no bids were received, right?
No.
So not really specifications of bids.
There's no bids.
No bids received.
Right. So they're gonna try it again before they choose how to go from there.
Just out of curiosity, do you need specifications on a vehicle, a used vehicle? And how would you get them?
I don't think that's what they meant. I think there's no bids received.
Right.
I don't think they had a specification other than you wanted to use.
Well, first you had to get on the reverse auction, you had to get the specifications of what you're looking for and then it's take it to reverse auction.
Then I guess you just say a used vehicle, describing the vehicle and what you want on.
Right.
And, and you did that and then no bids were received via reverse auction.
No specifications were submitted to be able to invite them to the reverse auction.
Okay, well, we're back to what you were saying.
That's what I said.
So you didn't have, I don't understand either side. We can talk about later.
Okay.
You call, send me, shoot me an email after me.
That's it.
Okay, then further discussion. All in favor of the motion, say aye. Out opposed, motion carries. Item 28, order designating any supervisor, county administrator, purchase clerk, chancellor clerk or any department head as board representative to receive bids as listed below.
Motion.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor of the motion, say aye. Out opposed, motion carries. Twenty-nine, order approving the state contract 8200057234, purchase of two.
Mid-suit.
Mid-suit excavator model PC 2010, one LC left and accessories in the amount of two hundred and thirteen thousand, six hundred and ninety-five dollars each from La La Machinery as recommended by the road manager and purchase clerk. Motion.
Motion.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor of the motion, say aye. Out opposed, motion carries. Acknowledged, shared.
On a total, we have seven hundred and forty-eight, thirty misdemeanors, one hundred and forty-two females, seventy-nine is court state arrest and twenty-six federal offenses.
Name shared. Item 31, order authorizing the replenishment of petty cash account in the name of Robert Trace with an partisan amount of five thousand, sixty-eight dollars payable from 029215613 to bring the account balance to the approved amount of six thousand.
Motion.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor of the motion, say aye. Out opposed, motion carries. Item 32, order authorizing advertising for kitchen equipment and furniture for the Harrison County Law Enforcement Training Academy.
Motion.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor of that motion, say aye. Out opposed, motion carries. Item 33, order acknowledging the disposal of Morgan, of the Morgan building, model number 24629TYCS4, serial number G76854, located at the sheriff's work center. Motion.
Motion.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor of the motion, say aye. Out opposed, motion carries. Item 34, order approving the sole source purchase of eight body worn cameras and eight completing the car videos from metric solutions at a total cost of fifty-nine thousand, four hundred and fifty-six dollars payable from 00120922 and authorizing line item transfer from 0012211468. Motion.
Motion.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor of the motion, say aye. Out opposed, motion carries. Thirty-six, order approving mileage reimbursement and count of travels for the following employees.
Motion. Motion.
Second.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor of the motion, say aye. Out opposed, motion carries. Thirty-six, order approving added Judy Williams, purchase clerk and primary card holder for the county procurement guard and Sam's club card replacing Joe Drex.
Motion.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor, say aye. Out opposed, motion carries. Thirty-seven, order declaring that the following road department item is surplus where use is trade and authorizing inventory clerk to remove same from inventory. Motion.
Motion.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor of the motion, say aye. Out opposed, motion carries. Item 38, order authorizing disposal of assets for attached list and authorizing the inventory clerk to remove the same from inventory. Motion.
Motion.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor of the motion, say aye. Out opposed, motion carries. Thirty-nine, order acknowledgment receiving of the May 2022, 2022 travel and procurement guard statement as follows.
Motion.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Out opposed, motion carries. Order, order authorizing reimbursement to the road fund 250000360 for the work performed as follows.
Motion.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor of the motion, say aye. Out opposed, motion carries. Forty-one, order authorizing transfer from the special levy three appraisal list fund 00290950 in the amount, in the amount of eleven thousand, four hundred and four sixty-six to reimburse the general fund 001000387 for the landscape ordinance provision work performed by Agent Shafer and authorizing the budget limit.
Motion.
Second, discussion, is that the full cost? Patrick, is that the full cost?
This is, there was one.
Eleven thousand, four hundred dollars for the landscape.
Yeah, that was the full cost and that was what was budgeted in the beginning. It's just completely done, it's already calibrated to the witness.
What does it says about you, maybe?
Um, I believe that Ms. Rocco was gonna cover that, so it was.
That sounds good.
In further discussion, all in favor of the motion, say aye. Out opposed, motion carries. Forty-two, order authorizing payments to the bridge fund 16000360 in the amount of one sixty-four sixty-six from the general fund 00152639 for signs made for, for the parks and recreation department. Motion.
Motion.
Second. Discussion. All in favor of the motion, say aye. Out opposed, motion carries. Order authorizing the payment of 283753 upon pickup of one 2023 E1 commercial pump or five truck payable from five services fund 10625922. Motion.
Motion.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor of the motion, say aye. Out opposed, motion carries. Forty-four, order authorizing the payment from the five services fund 10625542 in the amount of seventy-eight thousand, fifty-nine cents to the general fund 00120542 for work performed on various fire services vehicles.
Motion.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor of the motion, say aye. Out opposed, motion carries. Forty-five, order authorizing ill-funded loans and repayments per attached.
Motion.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor of the motion, say aye. Out opposed, motion carries. Forty-six, order approving payments of the following claims on the chancellor clerk.
Motion.
Second. Discussion. All, all in favor, say aye. Out opposed, motion carries. Forty-seven, order authorizing issues to do once as listed.
Motion.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor of the motion, say aye. Out opposed, motion carries. Order approving the following payment of court ordered commitments per service agreement of motion behavioral hospital of Lexian Gulfport, behavioral health soon approved by the board of November 8, 2021. Motion.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor of the motion, say aye. Out opposed, motion carries. Forty-nine, order approving payment of nineteen thousand, nine hundred and six dollars to the offer plan and design invoice number 00202016620 professional service on the projects, number STP 002400054, LPA active living initiative services here, May 1 through May 28, 2022, payable from 312540555, authorizing interloan fund is needed until reimbursement received and authorizing board president to execute reimbursement estimates. Motion.
Motion.
Second.
Second.
Discussion.
This bill was the second to last bill, so there is more to work on.
Okay. Any further discussion?
I'm looking up the Croker Classic.
All in favor of the motion, say aye. Out opposed.
I'm sorry, Mr. President, she just said she's on her phone again. I'm having trouble hearing you. I was telling our secretary about the Croker Classic that I didn't see on the rundown or the agenda, Connie. Please stop with the whispering and talking, it's very distracting.
Item 50, thanks. Item 50, order approving infinity BMB Catholic schools use of county equipment due to assistance hosting six-four annual Halloween carnival on October 14 through 15.
Motion.
Second.
Discussion.
Have to have a guy see on the resource.
Yes. I think it's in a letter, it just didn't make it to the agenda.
It is in the order attached.
Okay. It's in the letter, too.
Get the letter.
It's a grill fryer.
Okay. All in favor of that motion, say aye. Out opposed, motion carries. 51, order acknowledging receipt of the appraisal prepared by purpose on tax parcel number 0709D03025, dedicating the appraised value offered to the property owner to acquire, to acquire the right of way for improvement to the intersection of Canal and the Grove for the projects SAP 2459, accepting the easement issued by Blue Family Ethers and authorizing the payment of the appraised value for the easement.
Motion.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor of the motion, say aye. Out opposed, motion carries. Fifty-two, order adjudicating the tax sale of August 30, 2021 on tax parcel number 0711001007001 for 2020 tax erroneous investment for Aviniro and for related purposes.
Motion.
Second.
Discussion.
This was the board, this was the error and change in main, they sent the tax notice to the wrong person. So it should be satisfied, qualified for, satisfied, error.
Thanks. All in favor of that motion, say aye. Out opposed, motion carries. Fifty-three, order adjudicating and approving amendments, number one, to standard form of agreement between Harrison County Law and Payment Inc. for asphalt and MBS and authorizing execution thereof. Motion.
Motion. Second, discussion. Timmy, can you?
Yes, ma'am. This is something I tried to explain to y'all about five months ago. Didn't know a lot about it, but what this is, petroleum index. We're in record cost of petroleum right now. What it does, it gives the contractor a percentage that's set by the state each month. So they can't go over that. But what it does, kinda like our fuel we get every week, it's on rack average, it goes on petroleum from the state every month. It might be a five percent of that they allow, but as the prices of petroleum come down, it also goes to the negative. So it's a rolling scale on petroleum. Yes, ma'am. So I think we really need that to our contract.
The only two changes is the liquid asphalt and the fuel.
Diesel fuel. Fuel don't cover from like the plants to the job, it only covers what is allowed to be laid down on the job site. They're not, there's no big, there's no profit in it at all. But I think that's something that's gonna benefit us through our contract. Like I said, that was something I mentioned several months ago but didn't have full understanding.
And this particular contract is, will end next year.
Yes, ma'am.
Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Out opposed, motion carries. Item 55, order adjudicating authorized expenditures as listed as necessary to advertise and bring to favorable notice the opportunities, possibilities and resources of Harrison County, Mississippi, including the county logo being displayed along the link displayed to Harrison County online. Motion.
Mr. President, I may request separating, uh, B and B.
Okay.
And we need to, I need to be adjudicated.
That's adjudicated, boom, boom, because they had that there.
And it was really.
It was get fifty-four. We must be on a miss shot, okay? We'll go back up to fifty-four. Order approval design, oh, we just, do we?
It's different.
Is that another one? Oh, yeah, okay, I got you. Order approval design agreement being between the Department of the Army and Harrison County for Design for Harrison County Beach and Dune ecosystem restoration, two non-federal sponsors self-certification of financial capabilities for an agreement for the same and authorize the execution thereof. Motion.
Motion.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor of the motion, say aye. Out opposed, motion carries. Now we go back to fifty-five and we'll take A to get a vote on it to adjudicate.
Motion.
Second.
Second, discussion. All in favor of that motion, say aye. Out opposed, motion carries. And then B, we'll take it separate from the others. Get a motion.
Uh, motion.
Second, to be, all in favor of the, in, in discussion, all in favor of the motion, say aye. Out opposed.
And Rebecca, I did call them, make sure they get the right.
Oh, good. Thank you.
Motion carries. Item C through G can get a motion.
Motion.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor of the motion, say aye. Out opposed.
No, I'm, I'm discussion. One thing, Beverly, all, all the seafood is, that's the city?
Yes.
And here's the city, it's in Biloxi, but it is the city.
We have a letter, yes, usually the city that asks. The chamber, the Biloxi Chamber of Commerce coordinates it, but it's considered the city's event. Does that make sense?
Okay.
Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye. Out opposed, motion carries. Item 50, order finding that the 2022 assessment roll has been equalized for the first and second judicial districts and authorizing the clerk of the ward to publish the proper notice advised that the assessment roll are ready for inspection by the public.
Motion.
Second.
Discussion. Right, okay.
I missed it, I apologize.
Yes, sir. Item 56, order, order finding that the 2022 assessment roll that has been equalized for the first and second judicial districts and authorizing the clerk of the ward to publish the proper notice advised that the assessment roll are ready for inspection by the public.
Motion.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor of the motion, say aye. Out opposed, motion carries.
Now we can have a protest.
I'll go around. Mr. Hawley, have anything?
Yes, we have two matters for executive session. One is McAdams versus Ladner and the other is, I think it's Lefleur versus Harrison County, Mr. Hopkins, Representative Sheriff of Lefleur.
I think that's the name.
Lefleur versus Harrison County, which is a pending litigation, both of those are pending litigation, so we'll discuss the board. I'm not sure where the horse is, but.
The motion, go into executive session.
About that, my guy.
Motion.
Second.
Second.
All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion carries. Say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion carries. Tell me if it give us that big.
Yeah, the course of the executive session, we discussed two matters of pending litigation and strategies, litigation strategy, but. No action was taken on either matter.
And it was McAdams versus Ladner and four versus.
Sheriff, Lefleur versus.
Harrison County Sheriff.
Sheriff.
Okay, we continue going around the horn, Subadon, have everything, Subadon Power, have everything?
Yes, um, we got a, I got an email from Marty Wilson, um, it was very late, it was Friday, about the Kroker Classic, which is, you know, a big part of our heritage. Kroker Classic.
Kroker.
Yeah, it's been a long period of years.
Kroker.
Fishing. Anyway, I sent it to Brittany, unfortunately she didn't receive it, so I'll just put it on in two weeks, but I guess. Can I just make a motion to do it now?
Sure.
Okay, they asked it for three thousand, he said that Connie had already always supported him in the past, but. Whatever y'all want to do, Beverly, you want to go ahead?
Yeah, that's fine, I'll make the motion.
So we have something to write on what they're gonna do, what it covers, okay.
Which says advertising any resources, I already did, I'll send it again, I might have sent it to her.
Oh, you already got it, okay.
She said, I didn't, I never received it, but she's gonna send it.
Okay.
Can I make the motion?
Motion, second.
Second.
Oh, second, I thought you were sorry.
Yeah, I'm in favor of that motion. On those advertising can resources, county probably ought to consider making them provide us some proof of what.
That's what I said, I said that months ago, yeah, they talked.
And now we've included that they have to.
Put them on. Right, that covers us, I just. If the orders ever came back and said.
Yeah.
We'll tell them to find out what they did.
On the equipment, we have a sign that we made.
Right, that's okay.
That activity is used in the cooker fryer thing, but they've got a sign that's on the top of it. Which is not really good, because then everybody sees it, and they won't.
Yeah, and one more thing, after the June thirteenth debacle, I asked you then if we could get a Attorney General's decision, and you said it wouldn't come in time, so I'm curious.
For which one?
For the June thirteenth Brooks situation, you said it wouldn't come in time, so I'm just curious, how long do you think it might be?
It still may not, I was talking to John, he asked for one in December, it's still haven't gotten it, so.
Okay.
I'm gonna call him and see if I can speed it up.
Expedite it, and then I'd also ask you, um, I know that you Keating called you on behalf of the Tourism Commission to ask about Ann Stewart's complaint.
He did.
And I just ask for you to please let me know these things in the future.
I will, he, I told him, I said, I can't give you advice on that, Hugh, that's for y'all to decide.
Okay, that's fine, I would have liked to know that, I read it from a third party, had to confirm it, I just didn't like to.
And called two, and I told her the same thing, I said, you need to talk to my committee. Didn't work, because I said, Anne, which cost, I said, can't you be legal, vice call your, and then, then he had Hugh call me.
I know, but just as a courtesy, I'm just asking you to keep me in the loop when it affects me.
Always try to, I don't know where I was when I did that time, could have been traveling and.
That's all.
I don't remember where I was, but I'm sure that you're right, always try to.
Before you move on, Ken, can you come back to me? I do have something, just, just a issue that, I wish, uh, Tim Smith was still here, but I get calls, and y'all might get the same type of calls. Constantly wanting us to put speed bumps on roads. And I don't do it, I, I think it's dangerous and all that kind of stuff, but we do have a policy. In which they can go through to get request fee bumps.
I will.
They have to go through surveys, the people on the roads, and then they have to submit it to the road department, so there, we do have, I guess you'd call it.
Procedure.
An ordinance, I, I don't know if the ordinance or policy, it's an ordinance, I presume we passed. And there is, it's kind of a lengthy, it's not something they just go out and do it, it's, you go through a procedure, but they could possibly get speed bumps. On some of these roads.
In neighborhoods.
In neighborhoods. And, uh.
Does the county maintain them?
Yeah, county maintains the roads, and I'm telling them no, but I think they'll, some of them are aware of it. So, um, I don't know, what, what can we do about that if the board, with the, the pleasure the board would be to resend that ordinance? Is there something we can do, because I don't think, we need. Huh?
I don't like that. I don't really tell.
My last request, I have.
I have.
Yeah.
I got.
You mean going out to them, they were speed bump, they're gonna be trying, you need to be paying for a bill.
I often wonder if you do that, somebody unknowingly going on that road, even though it's in a subdivision. And has, has an accident or, or tears their car up, what, you know, that's, that's all, that's almost like a road pass.
Absolutely.
And like Ken says, that's a car.
Speed bump, I think that's their responsibility.
Do I, I'm sorry?
Once you have signs up.
Sheriff, don't just go now and be responsible.
I would think that'd be their responsibility.
You just go just. You don't just.
What I'm saying, Peter.
I know that you would slow down response time, because, I mean, nothing else slows it down, so I mean, they go over speed bump at sixty miles an hour if they're responding to something. So I don't think, I don't think that would, you could say that. I know there's a lot of subdivisions that. You know, since they won't give us radar in the county, that have requested it and want it, but it's, it's not gonna solve anything. People are gonna go, go just as fast as they, they were before.
They'll go around and there's a way to, uh, but I just want to tell you, the lady's asking for that, we, we, I'm gonna give it to her, so there's a possibility. That they might go through that process. So, just want to talk about. Off of Land and Road up there, Land and Road Estates, Land and, Land and Lake Estates.
Anybody, if any subdivision needs it, they need it.
They need, yeah.
Because there's nothing we can do, I mean, we, we go out there and sit and.
And, and the strangest part about it is, the guy that's beating is a resident there. She told me, you know, she didn't know who he was, she knew the truck, and she knew that he was a resident there. And then we paved the road, and that aggravates it, because they go about ten miles per hour faster than they normally do. So, but anyway, I just want to point that out.
Rebecca, you have something else?
Yep, that was it.
Okay.
I got a couple of things, oh, somebody in the news media asked me this, Brittany, and maybe you might have to answer. Is why can't they get the attachments when the agenda comes out? Is there a reason for that?
For the public to have access to that?
This in particular was a reporter.
Personal information.
They generally don't get that to an agenda, I mean, they're attached to the agenda when agendas don't.
Yeah, but she said that, like Biloxi, you can click on them online and it pops up, but ours apparently you can't do that. So when you go online and try to.
That's right.
Click on.
The supervisors actually get the backup until, until the agenda, that's just the way it's been done.
Until what?
Until the minutes.
Till the agenda's finalized, when the agenda's finalized, then whatever happened on the, the action that was taken will have those backups attached.
Then it should be resent.
The minutes, when, when Ms. Henrietta posts the minutes, the backups are there.
Gotcha.
But not for the proposed agenda.
Is there a reason now, we just don't believe it?
Well, it's a variety of things, the board, the board could decide not to consider a matter, and you've already put those on the, on the public agenda. I mean, the backups themselves, not the item, the item there.
She just.
They're asking personal information on, on some of it, I mean, there's a.
I know they have a right, would, would they, would the community or the public have a right to those backups?
They don't, if they did a public records request, yes, they would have a right to.
Like on Biloxi City Council.
Unless it was an exemption.
It's on there, it's on there.
If their agendas are so sparse.
Yeah, theirs is very.
Usually they say playground consideration, then you got, they don't have a long statement like, like they have the hours.
Speaking of agendas, several people called me, including council members in different cities, saying that we don't really follow Robert's rules, because on number one, we're supposed to. Vote to approve that set agenda, and then at the end, we really shouldn't just, you know, talk about the Kroker Classic, and then making motions on major things like what happened on the thirteenth. What are the rules on that?
Well, the board's never really adopted Robert Rules of Order, we use them as, in my experience with the board, is use them as advice if it's speed arises about certain things. So we don't follow Robert's Rules of Order, or say.
Thank you.
Uh, yeah, you, the, the agenda can be handled two ways, you can either approve the agenda, or the president can sign the agenda at the end of the meeting, and that's the same thing. So that's what we've been doing, is signing the agenda at the end.
Gotcha.
Which reminds me to, um, if you could send the agenda to the board members prior to releasing it to the public. Because the one before last had a couple of errors on it, and I got the phone calls that was about those tips, and it was a mistake. And so then LOX was calling me, but then you had sent the corrected agenda out the next day, so is there a way to?
I've always, I've been told, um, to send it, you know, when I get a draft, I send the draft to the board president and the county administrator. And they make all the changes that need to be made, and then after that.
Everybody.
Once the board president says it's good to go, I release it.
To everybody, but my question, I guess, is what the president did, is, is there a way that we can get it before it gets submitted?
And to prove it?
Yeah, just to prove it. I mean, it doesn't matter.
It's up to y'all.
It was just that LOX had called me, and it wasn't just LOX about the tip that I probably would have caught. Had I seen it on there, because today.
There's, there's one other thing, and what kind of procedures that I don't understand, is that this board never approves the minutes.
It's the president's.
My son.
He signs.
The board doesn't have to approve the minutes?
Statute requires either, go look at it again, but statute requires either the. Requires either that the, the board vote to approve the minutes at the next meeting, or the president signs the agenda.
Okay.
And Ms. Henry's been preparing a, a paper.
And so what we do is we.
I know, I've been, I've signed.
And so that's how we handle that, now.
So that's.
The board can choose its procedures, Robert's Rules of Order is a, is a guide, more or less, I mean, the problem with adopting. Robert's Rules of Orders, there are some things in the Robert's Rules of Orders that conflict. So they've gotten, they've had litigations where somebody said you adopted Robert Rules of Order, then you didn't follow. So that violated this or violated that. If you vol, if you adopt Robert's Rules of Order just as advice, in other words, then the board has the choice of changing things, they can choose us to. The, Rebecca's right, you know, on the, we're not following the proper procedure, but usually it's not a big deal, because everybody votes on it. But if, at the end of the, if there are matters gonna be added to the agenda, then the motion should be made to amend the agenda, the board should vote as a majority.
I think we do that.
Well, not on some things, sometimes they do, sometimes we don't.
We just go around at the end and just small talk, do you have anything, we absolutely do not.
And the board controlled, well, sometimes they do.
Public doesn't like that, because they feel like when people slide things in at the end that were as monumental as June thirteenth, that is why there's almost a thousand views of that boring long meeting.
And I understand, and that's, that's, that's something the board can choose to act if it wants to, but you can't add anything unless you. Either put it on the agenda in advance, or you get a majority of the board to agree to amend, amend the agenda.
Well, to cover what Rebecca's saying, we, for example, shoot, if, if she thinks about it in time. But you add it, you could ask them in the agenda to include that on.
Or you have a majority vote to do that.
Well, that's the problem.
But you know, to.
You have a majority vote, because they've already discussed.
But this is what I was gonna suggest to you.
Like your, with the Kroker.
Oh, gotcha.
And the other things, that's.
Yeah.
But we need some kind of policy, in my opinion, to put these committee and commission appointments on the agenda a month in advance.
Thank you.
Would that be hard?
So we could at least know.
So then that would eliminate the, um, surprise.
Thank you.
On both sides, and I don't know.
If you guys could send me what you want on the agenda, you know, if you want to, what you're gonna do, I could send it on.
Y'all got, but y'all are the ones doing it, so y'all have to find it out if you're gonna do it, that's the problem.
That you're right.
We don't know, we don't know when things are gonna come up ourselves either, so we're trying our best not to.
Peruse that list and send it out when someone, I know you've sent it to me.
I'll just send it to y'all.
It's just like.
So I kind of look to see when they're coming up.
For instance, the Bill Holmes thing, he's serving illegally, I know you said he's over at twenty-three, but you stated to me that he is not even in line right now.
Yeah, he is, he was re.
No, well, he, yeah, but.
We're not in line.
He doesn't, because the law says you have to be able to serve for a five-year term, he wasn't able to serve for five-year terms, that would have put him over his, it would have made him eleven years and three months. So I thought when we spoke that you agreed that his.
His appointment would end on. He's appointed for five years, but he wasn't.
Says, if we're gonna feel like Connie, you know, pick.
He runs on two days.
It says you must be able to serve five years, he technically is negated, because he was not able to serve five years, it would have pushed him over his ten years.
That's, that's, that's actually a little bit, you gotta read these separate provisions, he can be appointed for a five-year term, that's what it provides. But he's capped at ten, so his five-year appointment is gonna end July one of twenty twenty, he can't serve more than ten, he didn't get illegally appointed.
Line, it literally says must be able to serve a five-year term and not supersede ten, so I'm just saying, when is the law right, and when is the law not?
So he didn't serve, and he's not superseding ten, right?
No, he's already served nine or eight years.
You gotta remember, when the statute started out, it staggered these appointments, which caused some to be appointed for less than five years.
Yeah.
But inherently, there was gonna be some that served. That, that if you appointed them five-year terms, that were gonna go over the ten, because you had some that served two, one, two, and three years, then they started a five-year term, so if you got.
I understand, but we all agree it's poorly written, but again, that, I'm just letting you know, that is a lot in there.
He's legally appointed, he just can't go beyond Jan, July one of twenty-three, his term will have to end then, because he's.
He's turned out.
Well, that's not how it works, in my opinion, I didn't go to law school, but.
Well, I did, but it's still not clear.
She has three masters.
I didn't draw the line.
She kind of knows the law too.
Um, and this is off the subject they thought, but on the old police station in De'Avil, we rejected the bids. Because closest one we got to the three hundred and fifty was like one sixty, this happened with the appraisal. But Rusty Quain, and them keep calling me about, should we just rebid that, how do we handle that?
What's that again, I'm sorry?
All right, when we asked for bids on my old T I P O police station that we were selling.
Right.
We got three bids, the closest one that came to the appraised value was less than fifty percent of what it appraised at.
Appraised for.
So these same people want to know if we're gonna rebid it out, I don't. I don't know, I mean, I'm really the seller.
To the board.
But it's, but I hate to sell for half of what it's.
Can we, once we, if we go out for bids, and the bids are less than the appraised value, do we have the authority based on the fact that we did go out for bids and sell it for less?
Term that the appraisal's incorrect, the offer is okay, but.
But.
Make sure we have to document and talk to the.
Would it be better just to rebid it out, my question?
If we rebid it, the bids come back again, then you have an even better indication that you're not gonna get the appraisal, but the problem with appraisal, it's just an opinion, number one, it's an educated opinion, but it's still an opinion.
We got two, right? We got two, right?
We only got one.
We only got one, but I would like to rebid it, because there's some interest in the building, and I just don't want to pay for it.
But it's worth more than a hundred and sixty thousand dollars.
I think so, and then the next bid was like sixty thousand.
Just make sure they rebid it if we send it out, but you know you can, we have the option of listing it with a realtor.
So do I need permission from the board to rebid that?
There's a way to list it with a broker, if you wanna try it that way.
I will meet.
I'll look at the statute.
So what did you say? Rusty Quain, and Rusty Swim, and then I forget the other one.
Let me look at the statute at the next meeting, we'll look at the statute, see if you can list it with a realtor, just try a different alternative.
Okay.
List it with a realtor and see what you can get out of that. Probably bidding, it depends, we saw in the newspaper, he got nervous of the bids, and. You know, that's the hard part about whether or not you got the.
Well, apparently between Wendy and Rusty, they, Wendy apparently reads those.
Yeah.
Newspaper articles.
Wendy, Wendy, did, did you?
He bid on it.
Is, was he the highest?
But see, then Rusty wants to, he's real interested in it, because it's in De'Avil, and I think the, the city might want.
I think you need to be careful, just like buying property, selling it especially, we need to be careful.
Well, that's why I said.
Especially if you've got a record of, of an appraised value, and you own fifty percent of it, I, yes, trouble, I'm like Tim, you either. Go out for bids again, or. I got, I would be tempted by that, I would not be comfortable selling that building for less than fifty percent of the appraised value on it.
So y'all, hey, we go out for bids again, and then if they come back low again, I guess we can look at.
Watch, watch, wait till next week, let me look at the statute, that'll give you the option, possibly of listing it with a realtor, try a different avenue of selling it. I think the statute allows in certain circumstances to do that, so let's look at it, by next meeting, we'll decide whether to rebid it or, or list it.
All right, that was all.
Probably, if you list it like that, you'll probably get more people interested in it.
Because the realtor's got the motivation to find the people. And the motivation to get more money.
It's more than what we got off of it, so, that's all.
All right, Sheriff, you got anything?
Yeah, I got two things. First one is the mental health board, um, I'll need to find somebody else to fill this position.
Tricia. Leave it, Tricia, space. He missed that.
I mentioned Mr. Estes before, so that's something we can talk about.
Timmy Estes.
Bobby, sir, he was a center for years, I'm sorry, you, you see, yeah, thank you.
You had that as a point, you can handle it.
No, it's, I mean, it's, I just, I don't have time to do it as much as I used to. Um, second thing is, is. Where contractors at the academy are looking, they're on, they're on target to finish, you know, by the end of the year, and this, I, I need to know where this bond money is coming from. Or when it's gonna be here for the academy.
We gotta go get it, and we haven't gone out for that bond.
You did the resolution for it.
So we just need to tell them to come on?
Can somebody tell them to come on?
I will, I will, because S M P D D wanted to bid. On it as well as spring and change.
I would say by October, um, maybe the first of November, I'm, I'm gonna start needing it.
That's part of the fifteen million or the five million?
I think it's the five.
I think it's the five, fifteen was for.
Fifteen.
But actually, we did talk about doing fifteen, because we were gonna get the money for District Two as well as the new building.
Right.
For the tax collector. for the tax collector, so it was, it was gonna be about fifteen, three or four of us.
I'm a little confused, which one's for bucket, which one is for all this other stuff?
Fifteen million went down for bucket, sorry, separate.
Seven, that was seven.
Well, we hadn't done that.
And then the other one was for, three million for the playgrounds.
For District Two, whatever you wanna use it on, and then the share and the building.
Yeah.
Yeah, that was to bring you up.
We did do a resolution of intent to issue the bucket bond.
Yeah, that's what I'm.
Did that?
We did, yeah.
A resolution of intent on this, I don't plan.
Okay, we have not done that.
I, I, I don't think.
We didn't do what, uh?
Resolution on the fifteen that was covering the academy, the building, and something else.
Two, and District Two is three.
Right.
Cause we didn't have a number.
Well, let's look, see, make sure how much you still need, you still need to, three?
No, no, it was, no, it was a million, I think.
Wasn't three? Sure.
Yeah, it was, no, I mean, it was.
District Two is three, so that's four, and then we had.
Cover the, to cover the percent of the, um, of the money, so.
Well, we came in right around six for the building, so we're up to ten. Is that right? Am I missing anything? So it'd be a ten million dollar bid.
That building was six.
Yeah, cause we thought it would be five.
Roughly six. About playing on it, yes.
Yeah, I know you did.
The dirt works going on, that's it, that's where the bill is gonna be, right?
Yes.
It's a, it's a.
It's high.
They loaded it up, they loaded it up to make.
The ground part, that's a cost, he's gonna buy a general foundation.
It's still all part of this six million, I think, so we're looking at ten million?
Okay, we do, start doing a resolution of intent.
Y'all think something, that's a better thing now.
How much is our work?
Oh, the, um, disabled building that we went to, the, for the disabled, intellectually dis.
I D D.
I D D, thank you.
That's that one that's in deplorable condition.
Yes.
It is, it is, I bet you.
It's like, well, how much is it? The tracks.
Why, why do we put it on doing it?
How much is it?
I, I wouldn't even know, but she brought me there to.
I think a few of you went, yeah.
The way you described the meaning, but demolish it.
Yeah, it's pretty gross.
We're building the next project.
That building is.
Where is that located?
I'm over there, the railroad tracks near Broad, Forty Second.
Yeah.
But Rebecca, sir. It's, it's.
I'm at the hospital, I'm running.
Yeah, back, back.
But it's closer, Hundred Forty Second.
Yeah.
It's where they used to be.
The shopping.
What are they restoring the beads and stuff like that?
Yeah, they, yeah, I go over there and visit a lot, yeah.
Yeah, it's a.
I think it was forty-fourth or Forty Second, whatever.